Okay, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Monday, April 25th, 2022 at 5:30. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Santenaz.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here. Okay, item three. Jeff, could you read the closed session items, please?
There are three distinct categories, several different cases. First is conference or legal counsel, existing litigation. We have two items. The second is conference or legal counsel initiation of litigation. We have eight items. And then third, we have conference of labor negotiator, and we have a request from one of the bargaining units.
Okay, is there any recusals or conflicts?
Mr. Mayor, I will be conflicted out of item 3B4 because I have property too close to Tribuco Street.
That's 3B4.
And also 3B dash point six, same problem. I'm too, I have property too close to that location. So I'll be recusing myself from 3B dash point four and 3B point six.
Anyone else? Not seeing any. I guess there's no public comments because there's nobody in the audience. And let the record reflect that Mr. Coops has recused himself from 3B point four and point six. Okay, let's reset the closed session. Okay. Let the record reflect that we're reconvenienced to an open session, and there was no reportable action in closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Santenaz.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here. Okay, can we please rise? I'm gonna have the invocation led by Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez, and a pledge of allegiance by Elizabeth Corpus, our Director of Planning.
Please bow your heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life, the gift of family, the gift of this great community called the City of Bellflower. We thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. We thank you for giving us this wonderful dedicated staff. We thank you for our military, our first responders, the sheriff, the fire department, the paramedics. We thank you for giving us wonderful residents who are responsive to the needs of this community. We thank you for allowing us to meet tonight to address the issues before us. As we discuss these issues before us, please enlighten us, guide us, and give us the wisdom to decide what is best for our community. We ask all this in your mighty name. Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, City Council announcements. The City of Bellflower's Public Safety Department and Los Angeles County Sheriff's Bellflower Special Assignment Team are hosting catalytic converter etching event here in Bellflower on Wednesday, April 27th, 9:00 a.m. to noon for our residents. Catalytic converters continue to be a common item stolen off vehicles. Engraving a catalytic converter with the license plate or the VIN number assists law enforcement in locating the victim and hopefully returning the stolen property. Unfortunately, the sign-up list for this etching event is currently full. However, to find out more information about future etching events, please call 562-925-0124, extension 2557. Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Bellflower and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department have teamed up with Kaiser Permanente to host a national take-back initiative event on Saturday, April 30th, at from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Kaiser Permanente Medical Office located at 9400 East Rosecrans Avenue. The collection site entrance will be indicated on Clark Avenue. Local residents can turn in unused or expired medications anonymously for proper disposal by the Drug Enforcement Administration. For more information, visit the e-citizen available at www.bellflower.org. That's all. Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has recently partnered with a local rewards company. Local Light is to create a Bellflower-centric app that allows customers to earn points back within the Local Light network. The Local Light app provides offers with rewards points, creates video spotlights that showcase many independent shops around our town. For more information on this, please contact the Economic Development Department, and they can be found at 562-804-1424, extension 2010. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, last year, the city implemented a more aggressive policy to stop the discharging of the illegal fireworks. The enforcement strategy permits Bellflower Sheriff and public safety personnel to respond to a complaint at a residential property, film the discharging of illegal fireworks, and if the person or persons lighting them cannot be identified, the property owner will receive a $2,000 administrative citation in the mail. If those individuals who are discharging illegal fireworks can be identified by, well, by the enforcement personnel, they will receive the traditional $2,000 citation as per the city's longstanding past practice. The city encourages all property owners to take a more active role in ensuring that family members and guests on their property refrain, please, from using the illegal fireworks in this Fourth of July season. If you have any questions or concerns about fireworks enforcement in Bellflower, please call the Bellflower Sheriff's Substation at 562-925-0124. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join the monthly morning mingle, which will take place tomorrow, April 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at 562-867-1744. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Okay, we got three presentations tonight. One is the 2022 Woman of the Year. At the March 14th, '22 city council meeting, we took a moment to proclaim the march as Women's History Month. In suit, we would like to recognize a Bellflower resident that has been designated as 2022 Woman of the Year. Ms. Rosa Carrero was honored with the title 2022 Woman of the Year by Assembly Member Christine Garcia of the 58th Assembly District. Ms. Carrero is a medical practice manager at PIH Health and a proud resident of the City of Bellflower. She is a nurse, a leader, providing high-quality care and deep dedication in her community for more than 25 years. Rosa is diligent and versatile and resourceful and committed to building a positive connections and relationships within our community. Unfortunately, Ms. Carrero was not able to make it here tonight. However, we do have a certificate of recognition that we will be providing her. The Bellflower City Council congratulates Ms. Carrero on the wonderful achievement of being named the 58th Assembly District's 2022 Woman of the Year. And with that, this is a proclamation that we're gonna give her, something she can hang on her wall behind glass, really nice. And I'm sorry to say that she didn't, wasn't able to make it here so we could all meet her here on the podium for pictures, but so be it. Okay. Presentation number two, proclamation declaring April as Donate Life Month, whereas organ, eye tissue, marrow, and blood donations are giving acts of, acts that are recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. And whereas more than 106,000 individuals nationwide, more than 20,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. On the average, 17 people die each day waiting. And whereas a single individual donation of a heart, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intensive intestine can save up to eight lives, whereas deceased organ donors saved more than 33,000 lives last year. The most ever was last year. Now therefore, be it resolved that recognition of National Donate Life Month, the month of April 22, is hereby proclaimed Donate Life Month in here in the City of Bellflower. And in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes online when applying for renewing their driver's license or ID card at the DMV. Signed by myself, Mayor Ray Dutton, Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Dan Coops, and Councilmember Victor A. Sanchez. And I'd like to invite Johnny Lamucci up here from One Legacy Up for a presentation here on the riser to accept the proclamation and have my colleagues join us over there, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to take this moment here to, to. Your organization is One Legacy, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I've been on the council a while now, and, and through this, I think this is maybe the third time that I've been able to do this. And since then, I do have the pink dot on my driver's license because of that. So it did mean something to me to go that extra click, let's say, and whatnot. And would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you, City of Bellflower Council. On my way here, I received a phone call from a gentleman that's been waiting two years for a heart. He just got it last week. What a, what a shock to me to receive that phone call because it's just, right now, the pandemic that we've gone through and everything, it's been really hard for recipients to get organs. Right now, it's an eight to 10-year wait for a kidney. So we're losing people on a daily basis. Again, I want to thank you guys very much for all your support, the City of Bellflower and council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamucci.
Lamucci.
Yeah. And we really appreciate you coming here and making time for us to, so we can declare this month as a donation month. Thank you very much. And here's the proclamation. Okay. Pictures? All right, our next presentation will be given by our local public affairs representative and our very good friend from Southern California Edison, Francisco Martinez. Mr. Martinez will be providing the 2022 Southern California Edison Reliability Presentation. Mr. Martinez, good to see you here again tonight. Thank you, and floor is yours.
Mayor, council, great to see everyone again. It's been a long two years. It feels good to be here in person. Thank you. Well, this is the 2022 reliability report. It'll give some background from outages from last year, and it'll cover some projects that are gonna take place this year. Some of them have restarted in January, and we'll just go through it. Okay? Just a quick overview, Southern California Edison covers 50,000 square miles, that's 4,600 circuits territory-wide, 1.7 million poles, 126,000 miles of transmission lines and distribution lines, and 730,000 transformers. The picture there shows the generation of electricity, the way it's transmitted through transmission towers, through substations, all the way down to distribution lines into the homes and customers such as businesses. In California, we are part of the Pathway 2045, which is creating a clean energy future. It is a big program, big project to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions in California, and Southern California Edison takes a big role in this process here. Some of the examples are electrifying transportation, using lower carbon fuels, electrifying buildings, and like I said, decarbonizing the electric grid by using solar and wind energy. Last year, Southern California Edison put out a paper called Mind the Gap, and it's a pathway to reaching these goals that I just mentioned. One way to do it, we can achieve this by cleaning the power grid and efficiency, electrifying as much of the world as possible in California, and Southern California pays a big role in that, being such a big, big area here in the territory. Okay, so what is reliability? In simple terms, having dependable electricity when you need it. I'm gonna cover some of the outages that we encounter. Some of them are maintenance outages. That's when customers receive a notice in the mail, or email, or text saying we're gonna do some work in the community. And there's also repair outages when transformers fail, and we have to go out there and do the repairs. One thing known as a major vent, I'll get into the acronyms in just one second. They are quite a wordful there. And how do we measure reliability? There'll be a few acronyms I'll go over. The top one being in blue is ASADI, which is a system average interruption and duration. So the D, just picture it as the duration. The SAFI is the system average interruptions frequency index, and the MAFI, the momentary average interruption. That's when you're at home, the lights kind of flicker, and they come back on. That's a momentary one. This next slide goes over all the circuits in the City of Bellflower. There are 32 circuits, and it breaks them down by name, such as the Alma, the Ellendorf, the Amos, the Bacon, for example. I'll skip down, the Larry, the Lobby. Don't ask me how these circuits are named. I couldn't tell you. I could just tell you that the number of customers on each circuit there, some of the most heavily used circuits, would be the Lobby, which has 3,004 and two customers, and those are some of the bigger circuits there. Now, the ASADI and the SAFI cause definitions. Some of these are equipment failure. That's an in-service failure of transformers, a switch or conductors. Conductors is the technical term for the wires you see overhead. Sometimes outages are caused by animals, such as birds or squirrels coming in contact with the wires, or two, vegetation, trees falling into the wires. Other ones are the circuits that go out, crews come out, they inspect the, the area, they inspect the transformer, the wires, and there's no cause found. Another one is operations. This is when our patrolmen are out in the area, they're patrolling, inspecting equipment, and if they notice something's about to fail, that's when outages are proactively done, and customers do not receive a notice. And those are because if they don't do this proactive work, the outage will take eight hours, for example, can take up to 30 hours for repair if it, if the equipment fails. Third party are outages caused by a Mylar balloon, those metallic balloons. These outages increase during Easter, Mother's Day, and graduation, when customers buy Mylar balloons, they release them, and they make contact with equipment, and they cause outages, and those are pretty dangerous. Another one that is pretty big in the Edison Territory in California, it was called a PSPS. That's a proactive shutdown of electricity. In this community, in this area of the Southland, we don't have PSPS outages, which is a public safety power shut-off. If you live in high-wind areas, up in the foothill communities, in the mountains, PSPS happens unfortunately pretty often because the whole state is in drought conditions, dry conditions, high winds, high fire season. That is when the utility uses the PSPS. This is the overview reliability, going back to 2018 at the bottom, to 19, 2020, and 2021. The blue line is the City of Bellflower, and the red is the overall SE grid. And it's a side-by-side comparison of how the city compares to the territory on outages. If you look at 2021, the City of Bellflower experienced less outages in duration, that's 75 minutes compared to 180 minutes territory-wide. 2020 also had the same type of breakdown where the city was better than the overall Edison system territory. The frequency also was less in the City of Bellflower as opposed to territory-wide. So the trend is showing that reliability has been improving steadily over the years, and that's because of the grid projects we've been doing, and I'll cover that in a short second here. This goes into the percentage as to what caused the outages. Mostly, it was equipment failure. That was 47%. Equipment failure is transformers on poles reached their end of life, and the outage occurred. Another big one is third party, which could have been a car hit pole, Mylar balloons, anything of that nature. Weather, fire, and earthquake did not cause any outages last year. But if we think about 2020, I know Councilmember Hamada called me over the weekend during a heat wave. It was high humidity, and there were outages out in this area because of failed equipment. We did not have it in 2021. The frequency also was attributed to equipment failure and third party, 45% and 31%. This is a map of the city with all the circuits color-coded. This is probably something that city staff on the public work side would be interested in. They already have this information, but they can really hone down on where the circuits are, and will overlay it with where the projects are coming next year and this year. This here is just a screenshot I pulled from an interactive website that is updated every month on where we are in the projects. If you look at the top section, right over here, those blue dots are circuit reliability upgrades. In the past, we've received data that this community was experiencing outages at a high frequency, and by doing this work over the next year, it's gonna mitigate those outages. If you look further down in this area, these orange and brown dots, they're a complete circuit rebuilds. That means the poles, the transformers, the wires, everything is gonna get taken down and rebuilt brand-new. So that'll improve reliability also. Color-coded, and by the dimensions of, it goes everything from a replacement of a transformer to vaults to new circuits. And it gets very detailed, this exact slide here. We can spend a couple hours on it if we have the time, but I will come back and circle back with city staff on this. I think they'll, they would welcome that. This is a link to the website where you can actually go in here, click in, and will take you into this slide right there. This is more programs going on right now. This is no longer the reliability presentation. This is the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act done by the White House. If there are projects that the city would be interested in, Edison would help partner with you, such as electrical vehicle charging stations, that type of projects, certification of fleet vehicles. If there's a grant process the city's undertaking, we can assist, partner in these programs. And I bulleted three different types of projects. Most likely, the low or emission grant program, buses are programs and fleet programs. That's the federal money available. For our customers in the community, if they are having difficulty with the bills, the high bills, there are two programs called CARE and FARA, which helps with discounts on utility bills. There's a website there. You can link up probably directly from your website into this, this site, and there's also a phone number. Customers can apply directly, or they can call that 800 number and sign up for CARE or FARA. These are a few more rebates and incentives that are currently on our website. I just grabbed the top three that I saw. There are rebates on portable generators. These are generators you can buy, plug in your laptop, your Wi-Fi router in case there's an outage. I've used it in my home when there's been outages due to PSPS where I live, and these portable generators, it costs about $150, kept my router and Wi-Fi running at home for up to eight hours. So it's, it's a really good rebate. Also, the smart thermostat you can buy. Go to Home Depot, Lowe's, Best Buy, and there's a list of up to 20 different thermostats you can buy and get a $0.75 rebate. And also, there's washing machines, dryers, you name it. It's, the website is full of rebates and savings you can click on there. That is the end of my overview. If there are any questions, I'd like to, we'll take them.
Thank you. Great presentation, Mr. Martinez. Any questions to our, Ray Hamada, you wanna go first? I'll just start from.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go from right to left.
Again, first off, Francisco, thank you for being here. I know we've talked over the last few years probably frequently, actually.
Yes, sir, we have.
Various things that pop up. And I want, again, first, again, thank you for reminding me about that, you know, power outage, because my phone was ringing off the hook for that one. And, and again, I wanted to commend Edison for going out in, in, into the community to do pop-ups, and they actually were providing coupons for ICE and some information, and also trying to, you know, facilitate, again, getting the word out to the neighborhoods. So again, I want to thank you for that. Francisco, would you be able to touch on the recent change to rates? There was that, that time of use? I think it's, no, because for years, we were always told, you know, do all your, your washing and hit the dryer, do it at night, but now it's.
Correct, correct. Yes, yes, councilmember. So we used to have the domestic rate, and what you just mentioned. It used to be cheaper to run your washer, your dryer, your AC in the afternoons, but because of the way energy is now generated through solar and wind, there's a lot more electricity available on the grid during the daytime. So now the peak hours of electricity usage are now from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And what that means is, as the sun sets, there's less electricity available. Not that there's less, it'll just be more expensive to use. That is why it's called time of use, the TOU rate. I'm sure all the customers have been receiving those notices. It's just a shift in the industry. It's the shift in the renewables that we are now living in.
Francisco, recently, there was a request by some residents to check the EMR levels out in some of the local neighborhoods, just based on the standard poles and the overheads. Is that an issue?
No, sir. When circuits are designed, when they're built, the, it's called the EMF, electromagnetic field, that is, it goes up. That's the way it generates. If there's a customer that feels that there is an imbalance or an oddity, they can contact me, and we can go out there and do a reading. But we went out there to certain parts of the community, did the readings, and everything was within standard. But we went out there to certain parts of the community, did the readings, and everything was within standard.
Last one, secondary uses within your right-of-ways. Is Edison still open to, again, a lot of the typical secondary uses such as like nurseries and maybe even parks, of course, and some other things?
There are nurseries in our territory that were grandfathered in. Those are no longer allowed. The uses that are allowed are called low-intensity uses, such as open green spaces. No permanent structures can be built, nothing permanent, and that is because our crews will need access twenty-four-seven to those sites. If customers build anything, we would have to demolish it at a moment's notice, bring in our trucks, do our repairs, and we would not compensate anyone who had built on that right-of-way, which is why we don't allow anything permanent anymore.
Okay, thank you, Francisco. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sunny Santinez.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again, Francisco, for your presentation, and your presentation is very timely, because I have a question for you. As I was leaving church yesterday after the service, I was stopped by one of our residents complaining about lack of notification for a scheduled outage. So can you explain more about who gets notified? How many days in advance are residents notified, if there's going to be a scheduled outage? And for how long, things like that?
Yes, sir. So the notification is anywhere from four to ten days before an outage. Who gets notification is the account owner. Whoever is on that bill would get that notification. How do they get them? It could be a actual letter or email. Customers can go to S C E dot com backslash outage and sign up notifications. The best way to do it is put in your phone number, your email, and you get those automatically. Sometimes mail gets lost, someone might get something in the mail, and look at it, think it's junk, and just throw it away, not pay attention to those notifications.
Okay, so, so if they want to really be notified, they need to sign up with their email address, so that they will get notification more timely?
Correct.
That's the case.
As a matter of fact, they're going to say like, wow, I'm getting emails and texts, and they got it ten days, I'm getting it again, and day of. And customers will get notification when the power is restored again.
Okay, very good.
So that's S E dot com backslash outage.
Outage, okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Coops?
Yes, my question has to do with solar, and I'm under the impression that the rates that are being offered to buy back power from solar generators is going to be changed in a... You're not going to be able to pay as much as you once did. Is that still on the agenda for your...
So that is the net energy metering tariff?
Correct.
There are proposals to modify it, and what's going on is that the tariffs that were in place were developed twenty-five, thirty years ago to encourage the adoption of solar rooftop. I think we're at a point where there's enough information, enough adoption of solar rooftop in the industry, and now the tariff needs to be changed, because there's an inequity on the customers that are using and adopting solar rooftop and paying into the tariff. It's all about equity and fairness. So, yes.
So everyone will exposed to this increase?
Every customer in the territory is paying into the tariff right now, whether they use solar or not.
Okay.
So if a customer does not have solar, they're paying up to three hundred dollars a year more than a customer that is on solar and not using the system.
So when the calculations are made from the solar companies as to how to make their bill go down, it's all based on a tariff that is now obsolete. Does that sound right?
Yes, that, in short terms, yes.
And when will these tariffs be modified?
That is still in discussion with the state regulators. This has not been made yet.
I see. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Francisco, first off, thank you for stopping by and for the presentation, and for always being accessible. I, too, I know you've met with some of our constituents for the E M F readings, and you've, you know, you've supported through that as well. I do have a question through your PowerPoint, you, the one with all the dots, the red, brown, and the yellow dots and blue dots. I understood that this is regarding capital improvements in certain areas within the grid?
Correct.
Correct. This is the first time I get to use the laser. So, so this section here, this section, these grids, these colors?
Yes.
What's the timeline projected on those improvements?
So, there are some already that have been taking place. All of this is already designed and approved. Our permit managers have already come to the city and are applying for permits as we speak. If there's a specific area, some streets, I can really narrow it down to you when I speak to our crews. It's not, it's not hard to gather for you.
Oh, okay, wonderful. Yeah, no, it's more so the color coding. So does blue mean that it's been done? And then, because I know you put the website, so I'll check that out down the road, but...
So, for example, if you look at the yellow dot, that's called covered conductor. That is not happening in the city of Bellflower, because there's no high-fire zones. The covered conductor, just picture this being the wire right here. They're putting a rubber coating around it, so when branches may contact, it won't cause fires. But down here where you're looking at, you have a circuit rebuild and circuit public safety upgrade. So the public safety upgrade is that the pole has been deteriorated, it's at its end of its life, so we've got to replace those for public safety reasons, as opposed to a rebuild.
And then this is available, this set is available to anyone, right?
Yes. We can link it through your website, the city website, and customers could go in there and click on it, and it's, it's really, let me, let me see if I can find that other slide. So they would go in here, they would click on this. Do I have the time? I don't want to...
Yeah, you have the time.
Okay. It's loading up on my end here. I don't know if it's coming in. Thank you. Let me agree to the terms.
Of course.
Right? So... Is Constitution part? There we go, okay. All right, let me go into the layers here. Is that a better view for everybody? Can you make it out?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Okay. So I'm going to remove the weather stations, because we don't have that, that, that program here in the city. So I'm leaving the transmission, the distribution, and the city boundary. Close this out. I'm just going to pinpoint the entire Edison Territory, just to give you a reference of how much work is going on. And then I could just kind of zoom back in. The city of Bellflower. And it breaks out the city boundary. So this would be the entire city of Bellflower. And like I said, this slide here, we can really do a deep dive, and we can spend a couple hours on it, all the projects, all, all, all the work that we're going to be doing. Some of it are underground vaults, transformers, I mean, it is a lot of work. It's a big capital improvement project. And it's been going on for a few years, which is why you saw on that one slide, the reliability improving year on, year on. If we did this presentation six years ago, it would not have been such a pleasant presentation, as you recall, reliability, going back to twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's a good thing, you know, the investment into the, into the grid. One last question I have. I get a common question asked by some residents, and I don't know if this falls under you or not, but one of the questions is, how do they get more lighting on their streets, their residential streets? Is that something that goes to Edison, or for them to evaluate if that's actually a true statement, or if the lighting...
No, that is fair, and it's something that I come across often. The best way to do it is refer that to city staff, have them call me. If there's a specific intersection, if there's a specific area, and there's already an Edison pole, we can go out there and install a streetlight, and that's done relatively fast.
Oh, okay.
And I'm talking about a couple of months. So just give me those locations, and we will, we will definitely get that done.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Francisco. Again, thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my questions.
Thank you there, Victor. On the, you said there's federal programs regarding charging stations?
So that is the I I J A, that is a program from the Biden administration, and the funds are available nationwide. Jurisdictions need to apply for these through grants.
Are they for residential, commercial, or just for government, city government?
It's for infrastructure projects, mostly.
You have a structure for city government?
Bridges, streets, charging stations.
Yeah, would it be fast charging stations, or does it slow boat charging stations? Fast is where they're going?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. That's my question. I want to know if there are the fast ones or not. Also, we haven't built a power plant in, what, forty, fifty years? Is that correct? In California, unless, I'm not just picking on Southern California.
The generation side, something I thought, yes.
Something like that. My question is, is all the, all the federal government and states are mandating electric cars? In five years, with the car, electric cars come out, is the infrastructure there to put, say, twenty charging stations in twenty houses on every block?
That is why I said I'd work with city staff. It's not a difficult question. It really isn't.
Because I know what it takes to run an air conditioner if there's not enough power on the street. Somebody eventually buys that transformer.
No.
Yeah.
In order to get to that goal, we're working with all our jurisdictions across the territory. Everyone is on the planning side, reach codes, building reach codes. If a customer comes in and says, hey, we bought an E V car, we're fast-tracking the permitting process that we need from Edison's side on city staff.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm just thinking of a bottleneck in the future. Right now, we have brownouts on hot days with too much air conditioning, right?
Or during cold spells.
Or cold spells, too.
That happened in Texas.
Well, in Texas, because there was wind and stuff, but I mean, I'm just saying California, it's just, you know, my idea is everything's demanding electrical, electrical, and like you said, our electrical energy has changed with the computers and charging devices, and now we're going to electric cars, and I just, I know, I'm just, my personal way, my brain thinks, I'm thinking we're going to run into a bottleneck of power shortages when we start charging everything on cars.
That won't be the case, Mayor.
Won't be?
No, sir.
Not in Edison's case, huh?
I don't, no, not just Edison's case, but...
Well, it's good to hear. No, it's good to hear, because I just, that's making me feel good, because I just know that there's, you know, there's less, there's more solar coming on, but there's got to be a balance of how much power can get developed and how much you use.
Right. We're talking years, years from now.
Gotcha.
Yeah, there's still millions of gas-powered cars out there. But through planning and partnering, we can overcome all that.
Gotcha. Well, thank you very much, and it's really good to see you again.
Likewise, Mayor.
All right. With that, any more follow-up questions, guys? Okay, well, thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you, sir.
All right. All right, Mr. Stewart, public comments?
Yeah, this is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Okay. I wanted to let, before I ask the audience if there's any public comments, we received an email from Loopy Lugo regarding some public safety issues over on Woodruff Place, and I just wanted to let that be written into the record through the city's clerk's office. All right, does anybody in the audience want to address us during public comments? Just come to the podium and state your name and address, please. Not seeing any. Gone once, gone twice, gone. Okay. Item eleven A.
This is a consideration and possible action to conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual action plan. We're asking for an opening of the public hearing and a, not an adjournment, but a continuation until a date certain. Mr. Delong is going to give you the details on that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening, council and mayor and council members. HUD is late on releasing their C D B G allocations for this year, probably because of all the new census data that's out there. So they're, they've offered, or they've given cities a waiver to hold off on approving the annual action plans that they need to approve. If we were to prove it or take it to you tonight and have you guys approve that tonight, we'd have to come back when the new numbers came in and do an amendment. So we figured we'd just continue, request the continuance on this until June thirteenth, when we know we'll have the numbers. They're anticipated by mid-May.
Okay. Okay, let me ask the audience if there's anybody wishing to speak on this item. Okay, not seeing any. That answers that question, so, so then, so staff's recommending continuing, so the hearing does not need to be open unless there's somebody in the audience, and there's not. What's your pleasure, guys?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to continue the item, the public hearing to June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Sorry. Okay, we got a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez, and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinez?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Okay, item twelve A, Mr. Stewart.
This is continuation and, sorry, consideration of possible action to read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number one four one three, an ordinance adding a new chapter twelve point four two to Title Twelve of the Bellflower Municipal Code, entitled Permits Authorizing Events Conducted by City Parks and Facilities. And we have Mr. Milana, after a long time, making a presentation before us today in person.
Mr. Milana, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The, the proposed ordinance before you adds a new chapter twelve point four two to Title Twelve of the Bellflower Municipal Code. The title of the new section would be Permits Authorizing Events Conducted in City Parks and Facilities, and it clarifies permit requirements for parks and facilities. The current B M C lacks specific permit requirements for events proposed on city parks and recreation facilities, including constitutionally protected free speech events. The current permitting process for the city's parks and recreation facilities with, facilities with controlled access, access, which would be our indoor facilities and our fenced-in facilities, is already efficient and well-regulated. This proposed ordinance reinforces those regulations while providing strength in regulations for our open areas of parks that are more challenging to regulate, including our athletic fields, sports courts, fitness centers, and picnic areas. The key elements of the proposed ordinance include carve-outs, it carves out a distinct permitting path for events that significantly feature constitutionally protected free speech. It establishes a due process, procedures related to applications, permitting, permitting, permit conditioning, and revocations. And it ensures that city parks remain shared public resources and that opportunities to use the parks for organized and commercial purposes are allocated fairly and consistently. A public hearing will also be held on May ninth, twenty twenty-two, for the city council to consider a resolution to adopt all parks and recreation facility use fees and the policies and procedures that govern the facility use. That resolution will be considered in conjunction with the second reading of this ordinance, as the items will work together. The staff recommendation is to read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number one four one three, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions to Mr. Milana?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a comment and question.
Right ahead.
Mr. Milana, thank you so much for this proposed ordinance. I think reading this proposal, it's very well-thought-out, very comprehensive, and I think it will address a lot of the issues, and I liked the way you framed, especially the appeal process. There's, so there's always an appeal process, unless it's waived because of the timing of the application and things like... unless it's waived because of the, uh, timing of the application and things like that. So it's well done. So my only question here is, um, with regarding, with regards to cancellation, um, on page, uh, page six of nineteen, uh, when the permitting council's a permit fifty-nine calendar days or less before the event, there's a twenty-five, twenty-five percent, um, refund. So, um, what if the, um, is there any consequential cost to this, to the city? If the event is canceled, let's say, one or two days, because I'm thinking about you schedule staff to work on a special, on a specific event, but if they cancel at the last minute?
Yeah, yes, and that's why.
Is there a penalty for that?
That is the twenty-five percent, and that's what we've always had in our current, for our indoor facilities especially, and, and that is the exact reasoning behind that.
So that, my question is, is that twenty-five percent sufficient to cover that cost?
Yes.
Okay.
And i- in discussion and working on with this with the city attorney, these are actually a bit more, stronger of a penalty than was originally proposed in the original draft that we were doing. But this is what we have had in our standard for our indoor facilities. So I wanted to bring that in because it was, um, uh, it did have a strong penalty because it is difficult for us to rebook the Sims Park Auditorium, the picnic shelters, different things like that. And that's, that's why we have that in there.
Which is fair because, um, somebody else could have booked the same, same, same venue for another event. So I think that's very fair. All right, that's all. Thanks. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Milana, go ahead.
I was going through the ordinance. Uh, PJ, in regards to the, uh, new section on, uh, the waiver of insurance requirements, there's a twelve point four two point two four oh on page twelve of nineteen. In regards to a free speech event, you, uh, you waive the insurance requirement.
I will defer to the city attorney on that item.
I'm just trying to play out a scenario. That's all.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm happy to answer questions, but I'll tell you why it's in there.
Yeah, no, maybe start with that, Carl, and then I'll fall back.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the reason that that waiver is in there is for free speech events, the, the case law is quite clear that we cannot require insurance for those types of events. So that's the simple.
Yeah, no, that's, that's understandable. Now, but there could be conditions with a free speech event, which could include providing and using emergency services. So if my public safety personnel, I see two of, two of our finest out, out in the audience. And because sometimes during free, free speech events, I mean, emotions get elevated, there could be some physical contact arguments, et cetera, then, and if something happens, God forbid, people get hurt, then what? It's covered somehow, somewhere else.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, under those circumstances, we would be covered with our insurance pool, CalJPIA. And to, to your point about security, um, there are security requirements, but those are actually to protect the event from, from persons that may not be necessarily happy with the event, and they, we cannot pass the charge on to the event promoters.
The same liability we'd incur at any other public safety event.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I may have been just putting that out there for the, you know, the public just to have that understanding because, uh, sometimes just on the face, you know, it's like, oh, you know, goes crazy, and then, then again, understandably, case law, so on, so. All right. No, thank you very much, Carl. And staff.
Anything, Mr. Sanchez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just one question, actually, a follow-up to the free speech. Uh, so it's directed at Carl. Since we're waiving, we, you know, we obviously would waive the liability insurance requirement and so forth, there's also no fees being charged for a free speech event, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there, there's no requirement for any fees to be paid for a free speech event. Again, there's a specific definition of what free speech event means, and it really means, if you boil it down, is that it's a significant part of the event. It's, it's your classic free speech event. It's a march, a protest, whatever it might be. It's not something where it's a free rock concert, um, which is, you know, the lyrics technically are free speech, but that's not the purpose of the event. Uh, so just for small clarification on that.
Perfect, thank you.
And i- if I may, and the city attorney may correct me on this, but I believe in there, they would have to provide, uh, some type of proof of how come they're not able to pay the fees.
There is a requirement, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there is a requirement that they need to show why they would be unwilling or unable to pay the fees. I will say, though, that in my practice, they're all unwilling or unable to pay the fees. And so as a practical matter, the fees are waived.
So to, to clarify, when they would cut, and this is new, this doesn't happen on a regular basis for us, but this is setting us up to be prepared for if, if one of these, so they would put their application in, we would provide them the quote, the fees, and here's what it is, but there is a waiver process for that, for the free speech events.
Perfect. Well, that's just more protection in the long run. Um, other than that, thank you, PJ. I think this is reads well, and, um, it's good to be kind of putting together a, a good process for appeal and so forth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Coops.
PJ, I noticed in your report that there have been instances, probably primarily while we were shut down during the COVID, that people would take advantage of the recreation facilities without permission, without getting a permit, and suddenly just show up and start doing what they plan to do. And of course, I think city staff is there, and they tell them, you know, this isn't correct, you need to pack it up and leave. Is there, for instance, the park that I see, Crowe Brothers, primarily where I live, is when, on Sunday morning, I see massive tents come up. I mean, not just a small pop-up for a small group. It looks as though they may even, they're having a great party, or they're, might even have a church services. Have you noticed that, and is that permissible to, is there a, a limit as to what size and how many people can gather for an event?
Yes, it's always been a gray area. We've, we've seen weddings out there at times. Um, nothing consistent, but it's been a gray area. And what this ordinance is going to do for us is provide us many details. So you'll notice the event, um, uh, description and definition in this ordinance gives us a lot more teeth into enforcing that, and, uh, any groups that organize, there, there is a number in there on, on several of the definitions, but there's also other definitions that says it, it's regardless of the number. It's the type of activity in there. So this addresses that, uh, addresses all those, the athletic fields as well. Um, there, it, it gives us a lot more teeth to enforcing and being able to remove groups that should be permitted out there. And it's all, it, it's always been a, a difficult task for our, our staff out there because it's a drop-in park, uh, these, these open spaces and open areas. But this definitely gives us some, um, uh, more teeth in enforcing that, and also gives public safety when we need to call upon them to enforce it or remove a group when we've told them they, they're not allowed to be there, to actually remove them and cite them on that.
And that's been acceptable, or do you have a lot of blowback on when you tell someone it's no longer permitted and they have to go? Does that go well for you?
No, it has not.
And this is gonna.
We are, we are hoping this with a lot of signage and, uh, and, and assistance from public safety that this will help. And it, it happened before the pandemic, but what we saw happen, uh, during the pandemic, which made it very difficult, was uh, our groups such as Greater Balfour Little League and Balfour Youth Football followed the rules, and we, they, they were given restrictions that they had to follow the rules, and they stayed off the fields. Well, then we had these rogue groups come out and we tried to kick them off. They would, like I said, it was, it was very difficult, but it was just as difficult for public safety to remove them with, there's no real strong ordinance to, to remove them. So this enables us to actually remove them. It also enables us to, um, to, to keep a list of, you know, groups that are in good standing. So if they weren't following that rule, um, and you'll see that in the next phase on May ninth, when we bring the, the policies and regulations as well of, of different ways that we can have groups not come back if, if they're not following the rules as well.
Appreciate your, but I do think this is going to make a big difference on how it is we can conduct business in the parks, and they can be used in the way that they were meant to be used.
Yes.
And not just helter-skelter. I probably promoted some other questions on that, right? All right. I'm finished. Go for it.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Um, so on that note, first of all, I, I remember those days at Crowe Brothers Park, trying to kick people out of the, yeah, yeah, it doesn't really work too well. But, um, uh, PJ, can you, uh, define for me ad hoc pickup games? What, what in section, page five, section B, or sorry, C three? Ad hoc pickup games, what is that?
So I think that definition is in there to, when, when we're getting into a debate or discussion with a group that we've determined, you need to have a permit out here. You're a coordinated, organized group that's out here. You've got two teams playing, you've brought out goals, um, it's, they plan to come and have a game, um, because a lot of times we'll go out to these groups, oh, there's no referee out here. Well, there is a referee out here. It's a full tournament. Uh, so it's just another definition out there to, um, to, to give us some teeth behind it. There, there's still going to be some gray areas that, that we're, we're not going to get around it. But I think what this, what the policies that'll be coming forth on May ninth is also preparing us for is we're going to need a lot stronger enforcement when we get that new, um, multi-sports synthetic turf field come in, because we're going to have a lot of demand, uh, from groups, and we may have forty different nonprofit groups that want to use the field for free. So we're, we're getting, we're getting ready for that. And so a lot of this, it just helps us. But if, if we've got a small family out there, that's what we want the park for. We want them out there using the fields. It's, it's more when there's a conflict, when we have told Greater Balfour Little League, you can't be out there, and then there's two teams out there. But there, there's going to be, need to be a little bit of judgment. Well, we're trying to remove as much of that judgment as possible from our, our young kids that are out there working when they're having to enforce these things on some of these fields.
Very good. All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great presentation, and I see the ordinance does give the teeth that we need, and I'm sure we'll probably revisit it two years down the road and fill the, fill the gaps then again.
Yep.
Am I right? That's how things work. And the questions that were derived here tonight on the dais just, just goes to show you that we knew that there was something that needed to be fixed. And if there's any good thing that comes out of a pandemic, this is one of them. Okay, what's your pleasure, guys? Oh, is there any public comments on this item? Not seeing any? Okay. Would somebody like to entertain a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, uh, read by title only, ordinance one four one three, and ordinance adding a new chapter fourteen, a twelve point four two to Title Twelve of the Balfour Municipal Code entitled Permits Authorizing Events Conducted in City Parks and Facilities. Uh, waive further reading and introduce that ordinance.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, we got a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez and a second by Councilmember Coops. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinez.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye.
Okay, item fourteen, the consent calendar. Does anyone have any conflicts on the consent calendar items? Or want to pull anything for separate discussion or consideration?
Mr. Mayor, just like to pull item fourteen C for a question and comment.
Okay, anyone else? That's it.
Mr. Mayor, actually, I guess a question for clarification. Do, should I be, should some of us recuse ourselves from fourteen C, some of the applicants?
You're okay.
Okay?
Yeah, it's our conflict sheet didn't have it in either.
I'm just making sure. I'm just making sure, you know.
Are you double-checking our city clerk?
It's my first one. My first fireworks.
I always appreciate that. Thank you.
But, Mr. Mayor, if I may, my, my recollection, if, if you're the chairman of the fireworks committee, I think you have to recuse.
I'm not.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. In the past, in the past.
Chairman, yeah.
Uh, but you're the chairman. If you are the chairman.
Application.
Thank goodness, no, you're not the chairman.
No.
Nope, no, thank you.
We keep a pretty close eye on that stuff. You're okay.
Yeah, because I recall, uh, Councilmember Snabegger recused himself one time. So that's for that reason. FYI.
All right, uh, Sunny, why don't you ask your question on fourteen Charlie?
Yes, uh, Ms. Corpus, I, I alerted Ms. Corpus about my question about the, um, the fireworks. So my, my question is, um, last year, or this year, for last year's, um, fireworks permits, um, I was walking around the area and I shared with Ms. Corpus about, there's a picture that I took on the corner of, um, Alondra and Balfour Boulevard, months, months, many months after the, the fireworks. So my question is, before we give the ref, before we refund the deposit to the, to the peremptee, um, what kind of inspection do we do to make sure that the place is clean up?
Councilmember Santinez, so usually what happens is after the event, um, we have staff that goes out to each of the fireworks stand sites. And they're supposed to make sure that the stand has been removed adequately and that the area is turned back to its original condition. Once that gets confirmed, then there's a list that gets, um, submitted to our administrative, excuse me, our executive assistants, and a refund is processed to that organization.
Okay, so hopefully they'll do a better job this time because it was clean, but it was many months later on.
Got it.
Thank you.
And we will confirm.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I'd like to entertain a motion for the consent calendar, if anybody's a means to that.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Coops and a second by who? I don't know, it was a tie. City clerk gets a pick. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinez.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye.
All right, council reports. Councilmember Hamada, you first.
Yes. I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a few things. Uh, see, on the thirteenth, um, I participated with the Contract Cities Legislative Committee. I was asked to, uh, kind of provide a sort of update or, uh, some information on a recent letter that some cities have received. It's from the Californians for Home Ownership. I was quite surprised that, um, a good number of cities have not received the letter. So I'm not sure what criteria they, they used to send out the letter. Uh, some of these cities that did not receive it and, and asked for a copy from the staff of the Contract Cities uh, were cities that did not have certified housing elements, so, uh, so it was just a general discussion, and, um, people are still looking into it, and, uh, uh, they're having their legal counsel respond to them. I enjoyed, uh, a visit to the LA County Vector Control seventieth anniversary. I'll, I'll let Sunny maybe take more of that on, so I, I went along. And, uh, also, uh, I went along for Jack Jones, like, I booked a one hundredth birthday party, and I'll let the, the Mayor Protem discuss that. And same evening, I went to the Balfour Symphony, and, uh, we thoroughly enjoyed, uh, the, the performances. And I'll let the others, uh, follow up on those two, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Councilmember Coops?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. You know, I was thinking while you read your, um, announcements, when you brought on the catalytic converter concerns, wouldn't it be behoove the dealers that sell cars to offer that? And, you know, almost as a marketing item, that you'd say, listen, if you buy a car from me, we've already etched your catalytic converter. That kind of, you know, why not sell the car with that already provided? But that's just, makes too much sense, right?
Well, funny you should say that. They mark about every other part on the car. There's decals on the cars and, and places, the VIN numbers put all over that car.
Right.
They're on the, each fenders and stuff for that stripping purpose, but never on the cat.
We've got a twenty-five-hundred-dollar item that is being. You know, but if I had a used car lot, a new car lot, that would certainly be a marketing.
Yeah.
They say, listen, we're going to try to be proactive on this, but what do you think? Because this has kind of been your deal.
Is, am I mistaken, or is there some kind of a bill coming forward like that? There is, right?
There is already. I contacted the Speaker's office and, uh, and I said, well, you're, you're day late. There's already a bill going to the state legislature.
That would say?
That, that they will stamp the catalytic converter with the CMBI number.
So it'll be a, it'll be a law?
It'll be there. So I thought I had a brilliant idea, but someone is ahead of me.
Well, you, you missed out.
You missed a day.
But I just happened to think about.
There's always a workaround for that too, for the thieves.
No, I'm sure there is, but that's something that's really been in the forefront, and you see.
But it would slow them down.
It, it, has it slowed down, or people will continue to do it?
Oh, no, they continue to do it. Yeah, no, it's.
Well, there's another bill.
I get like one a week.
Okay.
There's another. There's another bill coming, too, that any of the places that accept that type of metal, because really, it's what's inside of the catalytic converter that they, you know, they want.
Looking for.
They're going to have to act like a pawn shop, and they're going to have to get ID, they're going to have to pay with a credit card, or sorry, yeah, get payment with a credit card or something like that.
So they can track it.
It's already pretty tightly regulated, they, they can't take those catalytic, take the metals out of those without a lot of tracking going on it now. I actually have a friend that was prosecuted by the city of LA for taking, selling catalytic inadvertently, so it's pretty tough, yeah.
Well, it's, you know, with the advent of all the great power tools that don't require a cord, it seems to be game on for the catalytic converters and whatever else was there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, just kind of bringing that forward. Why can't we fix this, you know? All right, thank you.
But they do make all kinds of devices to really slow them down, that you can spend a couple hundred, a couple hundred dollars, oh, they got cables, chains, special clamps, they got some unique stuff.
That's really what the dealers should be doing, is the lock boxes on those catalytic.
Yeah, it slows them down by half hour, they're not going to be under your car a half hour, they go to the next car, don't have it. Where was I? Okay, we got.
Yeah, I got you all off track here.
Yeah, you got me off my schedule here. We got Coops, we got Sanchez, Mayor Protem, Sunny Santa Inez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add to piggyback on Councilmember Hamada's comment about the Vector Control district, it was a wonderful event, it was their 70th anniversary celebration, it was well-attended, the tour was great, and as I've been saying in my prior comments, I look forward to this new technology that they're developing, trying to sterilize the mosquitoes, so I think that's, that could be a game changer. And also, Councilmember Hamada and I attended the 100th birthday of a Belfar veteran, Jack Jones. I was pleasantly surprised, there's a lot of people in that neighborhood who came out to celebrate him, and also I understood that the sheriff also did a, a drive-by for his celebration, that was good. And that evening, Councilmember Coops and Councilmember Hamada also, and I went to the, attended the Bellflower Symphony Orchestra, I can, I tell you, I, I was, I was shocked with the talent of this young professional, seven years old to 16 years old, if you missed it, you missed a great show, and I'm going to tell my friends to, to attend those events in the future. The next event is on August 20, they have the Concert Under the Stars, so please mark your calendars and make sure you attend, I mean, the talent is just amazing. I was, I was pleasantly surprised. And on a side note, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that this meeting be adjourned in honor memory of Evelyn Wisman. Evelyn Wisman was born in Downey, California, and passed away on March 4, 2022, at the age of 90. She was a proud graduate of Excelsior High School and lived in Artesia, Belfar, and Lakewood. Although she was living in Reno, Nevada, for the last 25 years, Evelyn always considered Southern California her home. Evelyn was a very kind, generous woman who loved her family, loved to travel, and play cards. Evelyn was a caring mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, and great-great-grandmother. She survived by her daughter, Linda Tightsworth of Belfar, grandson Eric Millet and his wife Renee, granddaughter Erin Stibbele and her husband Matt, three great-grandchildren, two great-great-grandchildren, brother Don, sister Lois, and many nieces and nephews. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Wisman family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any comments tonight, but I'll honor what Sunny's request was, is to adjourn the, the meeting in memory of Evelyn Wisman to the next regular meeting at the Bellflower City Council at 5:30 PM, Monday, May 9, 2022. Thank you very much, y'all.